Good evening. Welcome to everyone. I'd like to call the East Green Bush Central School District's Board of Education meeting for October eighth, twenty twenty five to order. Everybody except for Mike, I believe. Yes, his presence. Um, can we stand for the pledge?
Hi. Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the followed stands one nation, their own indivisible, liberate, just as.
First up, Student Council.
Hi. Um, so we've still been pretty busy planning for homecoming because it's not this weekend, it's next weekend. Um, so we've just been making decorations and stuff, but we have some exciting news. We have a new game at prep rally. We're doing tug of war again, which I guess we used to do before, but we haven't in a while. So we're excited to bring that back.
Um, for the past two weeks at our meetings, most of what we've been doing is actually making decorations for homecoming. In the past, we've bought most things, but this year we're actually making quite a lot of things. So I think it's coming out really well, and I hope that it looks good together.
Definitely looks good. It's all Matt. He's he's doing all the decorations. It's great. Um, we'll have some schoolwide news to bring to you guys this week. So the seniors have been completing college applications on Naviance with the assistance of the guidance department. As a senior, it's been stressful, but guidance has been really helpful.
We also have had our first Hudson Valley Community College Instant Admission Day, which is next week. Sorry.
And then we have a new club at Columbia this year. It's the Student Ambassador Club, and it has helped support every new student in the building this year. And this group partner is somebody who was maybe new last year with a new student this year so that they can help get their feet on the ground. At freshman orientation, they were really helpful in separating like the older new kids to come instead of joining them with the freshmen so that they could kind of understand how the school works.
We also brought back a program that we had, I think, in two thousand nineteen, Once Upon a Stage. Um, it's kind of like a cabaret with a bunch of musical songs. It's really fun. We're having rehearsals four days a week, and I believe our show is the first weekend in November.
And then lastly, just all of our clubs have started meeting for the school year. Every club's had at least one meeting underway. And so we're really excited to see what the school year brings and all the new events that each club will come up with. And that's all we have. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to the draft minutes, does anybody have any questions or comments?
I had a quick comment. Um, I know we never have comments on these draft minutes. Um, I did want to just, uh, reiterate about community partnerships that's that's in the draft minutes. Um, it would be great to get more on that direction, just to kind of keep that at the forefront. I also had wanted to ask a question about transcription from video versus how we currently do it. And I was just curious. Um, is there a reason why we do draft minutes the way that we do it? Are there alternatives that may work better and have a more, you know, full record? So just wanted to just throw that out there. I don't mean to throw a curve ball for an easy.
I would say if Mike were here, he would be a great person to talk to.
Gina, are you comfortable speaking to how you do it right now?
I take the minutes during the meeting and I also listen to the transcript and read them over again.
Yes.
So I don't just, I don't go home and just do it. I have to listen.
I totally don't think that's what occurs.
We also put the video up for people that if they want to listen to the video and the transcript comes up with that.
Okay. And and I'm really when I part of it was, I was thinking to myself, how could I save Jeannie some work is what I was hard part. That part of that was the question.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Okay, um, so any other comments, questions? Okay. So last week Cindy and Robert were not here. So, uh, do I have a motion to approve, Rob? Uh, a second, Kathy, all those in favor? And abstaining? Okay, moving on to the board forum. We're gonna start on this.
All set, thank you.
All set, thanks.
All set.
Yeah, so I I'm I don't mean, I don't mean to start talking as soon as I get up in here. Um, but I did want to talk about vibe coding. Um, you know, Cindy just just reminded me of something I was thinking earlier. I forgot to note down. Um, but it's supposed to be like the end thing for kids, right? Interested in a career in technology, vibe coding. So when we're thinking about AI, it's one it's supposed to be like the best pastime to equip kids with the skills to provide tools for the AI future that we're going into. Um, not saying that we would have something overnight, but I'm just thinking even just thinking of potential club opportunities, casual ways to get kids involved and on the cutting edge of of where technology is going. I just wanted to just throw that out there as something to just just keep in mind.
I'm good.
Well said, thank you.
Yes, I would like to let the board know. Something exciting that happened last night. Um, a survey was sent out to every student in each of the four classes at Columbia. I comprised these surveys with a few questions about how the yonder pouches have been going so far to get some student feedback. And, um, I read over a lot of the feedback that I've gotten so far. I've, it's really a mixed bag of responses based on the classes. Uh, I have to work with Dr. Coats to sort through how I'm gonna interpret all this information, but it was really, really interesting. I was really excited to get the opportunity to make these surveys and send them out to everyone. So, yeah, it's very exciting. To be updated.
That's that's very exciting. It was a mixed bag of responses, not a mixed pouch.
Moving on to the public forum. Residents, students, employees, and business representatives of the East Green Bush Central School District may address the board on matters concerning programs and or operations of the district other than matters involving personnel. Members of the board do not directly respond to citizen concerns during the public forum. If response is appropriate, either the president or superintendent will contact the individual in the near future. Those persons wishing to address the board will be recognized by the chair of the meeting and should state for the record their name and address or affiliation with the district or business. While the board does not wish to infringe upon free speech protections, it must be stressed that the visitor's forum is not deemed to be an open forum. The board president will conduct the forum for the orderly and efficient operation of board business. In addition, any remarks which may be considered defamatory or stigmatizing are prohibited and will be declared out of order. All comment shall be limited to five minutes. Have anyone?
Good evening. Dan Wagner. I live at two Johnny Place. Uh, social studies teacher at Columbia High School and EGTA president. Go Yankees. Game starts about now. Um, it's about a month in to the cell phone ban as Holly had just talked about. And the union would really love to thank the board for their support in this, for the central administrative team and helping craft all of this for our administrators, Mike Harkin, and I know Goff has already been doing it for helping implement all of this. So I sent my own survey out to members to talk about how much they love the ban because I assume they do, and my assumption was right. So I got some quotes I'm gonna read down really quick for you about it. Uh, not a mixed pouch or bag. So I got, uh, it helps keep students focused on the expectations at the moment. I love seeing conversations and movement in the hallways. Students are so much more engaged. I'm getting through things much faster than I used to, which in general chem is awesome. It means I get to teach them some chemistry that we have to cut out. Uh, my students are more engaged in what is going on directly in front of them and less worried about or consumed by screenshots of a message that George sent Eltona. I don't think that's actual people. Um, they are speaking to each other and that's cool to see. I also walk through the library frequently and there are a lot of kids playing chess. Uh, kids I never would imagine have printed the instructions, taught themselves chess and play it during their free time. Uh, my lessons are so much more going so much more smoothly. I've had to repace myself. Students are talking and looking at me and each other. Uh, my OG students are talking to each other. They are forming better relationships with their peers both within the program and outside. Another teacher saying I'm also getting through content much faster, a group project that in the past I had to allot three to four periods to work on. So these kids only two periods. I need to expand my curriculum and incorporate projects to ensure we don't run out of material before the end of the year. Uh, another comment, the last two to three minutes of class, and I could definitely attest to this, when students start packing up, they usually just bury themselves in their phones. Um, they're now talking to each other, building relationships. The hallways are so much more enjoyable now. Uh, we have, uh, my studio art students are creating more challenging solutions to the assignments I'm giving them. I haven't seen this much effort and focus in a decade. In recent years, it felt like they were rushing through their projects and starting to clean up process just to sneak on their phones. Uh, another teacher talked about something that we've all been missing, presence. Students are present in the moment. They seem more grounded, calmer, less aggravated, far less distracted. Another, uh, comment, one of the best parts has been having real conversations again. It feels so nice to speak with a student, make direct eye contact and hear them respond rather than trying to compete with earbuds or a screen. Uh, this change has been exactly what everyone needed, a breath of fresh air, an opportunity to be mindful and observant, a step away from the escalated pace of digital drama. This one was really nice. I absolutely love it. They said, I see students talking to each other and laughing and smiling. It's amazing to see them be so present with their peers during class. It has to stay forever. Sorry, Holly. I even heard, not that Holly you want that, but you're gonna, I know you're gonna hear some things. Um, I heard two kids talking and one said, I have no friends in this class. And the other replied, neither do I want to be friends. It was so heartwarming. Uh, another, we are finally acknowledging the growing body of evidence that suggests the danger in screens and social media by actually doing something to lessen the exposure. We must protect the next next generation from harm. I mean, it goes on and on. I did get one student perspective. Tessamiana said, I think it's fine. Um, and just the, and with students are more focused during class on the material being taught. And I can also echo that. It's been, it's been like night and day. It's been absolutely amazing to see kids just paying attention. It's weird to have kids always looking at you. Not used to that now, but seeing kids paying attention, seeing kids talking to each other, I can echo all these things. So we really appreciate the support of the board, support of central admin, our administrators. So thank you very much.
Thanks, Dan. Um, any, anybody else? No? Okay. Moving on to reports and presentations. I have nothing for that tonight. Okay. Discussion items, uh, board goals and objectives.
Before I get to that, um, on the consent agenda for this evening, I'm pleased to announce that I will be asking the board to approve the appointment of our new supervisor for transportation. And I would like to call to the microphone right now, Mr. Craig Lips, our candidate, to introduce himself for the first time to the board and to the community. So Mr. Lips.
Good evening. Uh, thank you for having me. I'm excited to be joining the Screen Bush Transportation Team and serving your district and your community. I've been doing this for almost twenty six years. Uh, I love it. You know, I tell anybody, I told Dr. Coats, you know, if you love driving a bus, it'll be the first job you truly ever loved. Um, what we do makes a big difference because if we're not there, it makes a bigger difference. And getting these kids back and forth to school, it isn't just about getting them back and forth to school. It's about getting them to their graduation. You know, Latin teachers and kids focus on learning so they can succeed. So that's what I'm here for. I'm looking forward to being part of your team and thank you.
Mr. Lips will officially be joining us on November tenth.
Hey.
So transitioning to our discussion items for tonight, uh, as a follow up to last week's conversation on the strategic plan. We were able, uh, between the last meeting and tonight to have a small board workshop with, uh, some board members who could attend to work on goals and objectives for the board for this year. The document that is in front of you is the same one projected up on the screen. I'm not going to read verbatim. But we worked hard together at pulling actionable items out of the strategic plan and really trying to focus on how could the board support those individual actionable items. We came up with five different blueprint priorities. Full disclosure, the fifth is really something that was amorphous of a conversation of some work that had been done by the board already that needed really to get carried to completion. Four of these blueprint items, numbers one through four, come directly from pieces right out of our strategic plan. I'm gonna walk you through what we have come up with. This is still in draft format. We can go back and we can make amendments to this. We can make changes to this before, uh, the board considers full adoption for our meeting at the end of October. So blueprint priority number one, if you recall, the strategic plan separated into three different priority areas, the student experience, the staff experience, and operations. What we were able to do was take some items that sat closer to the beginning of the timeline and look at how can we start to form this into things that make sense with some things that are current and relevant in curriculum instruction at this time. And you all have heard of the coming of the portrait of a graduate and the transition on graduation measures. If you go into the strategic plan, we were able to pull many of those, uh, pieces that had been identified by staff members, by community members, by students that had participated in the strategic planning process and put them under a way to be able to sport this particular goal. We also focused, Peter, if you don't mind just scrolling down a little bit, if you look at the action steps, we focused on the three main priority areas of the Board of Education under the action steps, governance, policy, and budget. Without reading each one, what we were able to do was really plug in the high priority items of the portrait of a graduate. Things that would focus on the classroom environment, social emotional learning. What are the transitions in assessment going to look like that are coming down the road when the portrait of a graduate comes to full fruition? Ms. Mahar, do you mind just speaking a little bit further to some of the work that you helped with on this, on really on the instructional pieces?
Absolutely. So one of the things you'll notice is a, I guess I call it, they're married, the student experience and the staff experience. What you're seeing is a lot of work around, you know, the student has the support that they need in terms of their mental health. You see governance on that. You'll see policy on that. You'll see budget allocation on that. You're also going to see instructionally that the students have opportunities. We know that we are going to have graduate, new graduation measures in the coming years. So what you're going to see at the student experience is that students have options, that they're going to have pathways. And that as on the staff lens, you're going to see that we are going to bridge and have, you know, opportunities. We're gonna build that. We're gonna build pathways. We're gonna build opportunities. We're going to work and learn about how we can do that. And that's, so that bridge and that portrait of a graduate really is going to be the center of all of that to really think about. What is the profile of a learner? What do we want our students to graduate? And and what do they, and it's not just about being proficient in one area. It's about a, an entire profile, like what are our our careers and our colleges saying that our students need to come into those areas knowing? So that portrait of a graduate really is driving that. And Mr. Dr. Coats also talked about assessments, that it's not just gonna be about the regions anymore, that that's gonna be an option. And what are other ways that we can demonstrate mastery and proficiency in terms of assessments, digital portfolios, rubrics, presentations? So there's, there is a lot of exploring and learning that we need to do on both the, again, and a lot of it also is professional development. The staff, we have some work to do so that we can provide that that student experience. So you will see that throughout those two areas, that really is the driving force, the portrait of a graduate and providing opportunities. Providing opportunities for different ways to show that mastery, professional development, and making sure it's not just about academics. This is about the whole child.
So, so in summary on that, thinking about it very pragmatically, the students sitting in front of us have a required number of Regents exams that they must have a a successful score on to be able to graduate from high school. And this very certain defined number of years, that's not going to be the case anymore. So there's a large number of questions around the state, then if not that, then what? So Mrs. Mahar spoke a little bit about rubrics. There's going to be a development, uh, that's going to be coming from New York State on statewide rubric so that performance-based subject areas are not the only subject areas that you're going to be able to have students demonstrate mastery in. It's going to be a very, very different experience on the student end. But to be able to get there, going into blueprint priority number two, our staff need to have the support in the professional development to be able to understand how do we get there? Many of our staff members, uh, have not had experience in terms of what project-based learning like, looks like an action in the classroom. The second action item here supports that. How do we become very targeted in terms of our resources for professional development? How do we interact with our staff to hear what their needs are to ensure that we're targeting those areas appropriately? But then really, how do we drill down so that when we have rubrics that will help us articulate what those graduation measures look like, because we will have a lot of local decision-making that we can engage in to do that? That our students truly are prepared for higher education, for the workforce, for technical school, for the military, whatever they may choose after their experience here in Columbia. This is really where we start to pull in something that we talked about. Well, what does this look like in action? Because one of the dangers of this transition is to say, well, this is just a high school change. It is not. What we are doing in our elementary schools is highly relevant to how we get to a culmination of a different pathway of study. So when we met in our small group, Mrs. Mahar, and I'm gonna give her the the credit, really, if you look on the the second page on page four, where we start to talk about what this looks like, she talked about exposure at the elementary level, exploration at the middle school level, and then engagement at the high school level. We really need to embrace that as the new methodology of which are the transition through the pathways for our students to get to where we want them to be. We then transitioned in blueprint priority number three, really more to the operational side of, well, how do we support the work in the district? If we look back to some of the old committee work that we did, a lot of the old committee work focused on long-range planning and facilities, and that's important. But one of the things that we're lacking, the only way that we can plan to support our facilities is to have a good financial plan at the same time. But there's more to it even than that. When we put new curriculum in place, use new rubrics, if we support the classwork, if we want to expand our offerings in the elementary schools, nothing should be what we sometimes affectionately refer to as one-hit wonders. We should not put a program in place with an expectation that it's going to be here one or two years. That takes careful financial planning. There's many times if we adopt a new program, a new curriculum, a new resource, it has ongoing recurring costs that we have to be prepared for. So in the third blueprint priority, we really started to really think about this focus on long-range planning and all three of those areas again, with a focus on policy, governance, and budgeting, trying to look at it from those lens. And we really tried to look at what board tasks and what board actions can support that, and that's what we've articulated here. We talked a lot about the relationship between the board and the superintendent, which would then trigger the superintendent to work with the administrative staff on those priority areas that the board has identified. Ms. Mulligan, did I miss anything there that we talked about that we want to speak further to?
Straight summary.
All right, good. Means I practiced well for tonight. Thank you. The next piece, uh, item number four speaks on, uh, communications. And one of the pieces that was relevant and communications was not just how do we communicate snow days or if the bus is late or what the activities are gonna be in homecoming. Some of the pieces that we heard loud and clear from those that participated in the strategic planning process was how do we connect with parts of the community that perhaps the information's not getting to? That they don't have the resources that they need to be successful here in the school district. And a lot of that is going to be very targeted. I had an opportunity to meet with Mark Adam before we finalized this to look at what are the instruments, the tools, the resources that we'll need to make those connections. So often we think it's as simple as using the computer to send out a parent's square and run a survey. What if that parent doesn't have internet connectivity at home? If they don't have a cell phone, or if they don't have the financial resources that they need to receive that information. What if we're sending it out in English and there's not an English-speaking person in the, in the home? We need to think more critically about that and how we make sure that we are connecting with all families and not just the ones that we would typically think would be here sitting at a board meeting for those connections. So a lot of that work will focus on how do we target that? How do we make sure that we're communicating with the board what the data that we've collected looks like? And then how do we allocate resources to improve on that in the future? And then the fifth priority area really focuses on some work that, again, the board had started before. And again, just to share, uh, this was work that did not appear in the strategic plan, but we saw a recurring theme about relationship between the board and the superintendent as we unpacked the strategic plan, and we thought it would be important to bring to the board's attention. During our workshop, it was clear that there was a, a desire to move this forward. So in creation of what you would either call a board handbook or a board governance handbook, what that is set up to do is it defines those relationships that are supposed to exist between board members sitting at the table, between the board and the community, between the board and the superintendent, and the board and the district at the same time. That's designed for this work to be successful. Because when we don't know what our tasks and what our roles are, we have a tendency to to flounder a little bit. Where when we are properly trained, when we are properly oriented to know what our assignment is, we can focus on mastering that craft, just as we would ask a student to do in a classroom. If you're sitting in an algebra class, but you think you're supposed to be taking AP English, that's a problem. If you're sitting at the board table as a board member, knowing that your roles and responsibilities fall with policy, governance, and budgeting, when you have an opportunity to go to professional development, as the board will be doing at the NISB Con- Conference coming up, you know where to focus your efforts. You know how to get better as board members. And when the board gives us directives as administration on what you would want to see as focus, we know then how to create very purposeful plans to bring back to you so that when you have to sit to adopt a budget, then it works. And the purpose behind having a book or a manual like this is for it to outlive everyone sitting at this table as well. Because when a new board member comes to the table, they then have a focal point, a document, that they're able to to quickly get up to speed and be able to do good work at the same time. And it's also a great resource for the community. Because when all of you decide that your time is running, of course, in the Board of Education, a future board member can also be very educated on what the work is when you have to sit here at the table. So. I know I moved through that very quickly. I didn't want to read to you. I think it's important that, you know, there's open discussion on what's here. We can prepare to make any modifications to what's here. But I would encourage the board to to think about at the end, excuse me, the end of October, to be prepared to adopt this so that the administrators can move forward with setting their goals for the year as well within their buildings and departments.
Oh, I got, I got, I always got a comment. Um, so I think this is, this is a great, I think this is great work here. Um, I think, you know, as an institution, um, you know, moving forward with, uh, you know, portrait of a graduate, supporting our administrators, having a communication plan, thinking about board governance are all unworthy causes, um, to move forward on. Um, when I was thinking through this, um, I was thinking of what type of learning do a student experience through through life, not just in the education institution that they they attend, right? And I think there's two types. I think there's in-classroom learning. I think there's out-of-classroom learning. I think that, um, portrait of a graduate has ample room to kind of, um, target both sides. Obviously, as an education institution, I think we would target the in-classroom, um, predominantly. But when I start thinking of flexible pathways, I start thinking of what might, what types of learning might we be missing that is also equipping children for the future that is measurable? Um, and and the idea is, and not just students, but also, because because at the end of the day, we're serving people, like a whole person, whether student, whether staff, no matter who it is. Um, so similarly, I was thinking the same thing for teachers, but I I felt like for students, it was kind of captured in portrait of a graduate. When I was reading through the staff experience, I was thinking, what about the teacher who not only is having a challenging classroom experience, but is having challenges at home? Right? Like what is in there outside of, right, pedagogy, you know, like all of the classical institutional, um, you know, ways that we help guide teachers professionally? I was thinking, how do we embrace the person? And I think that in in both aspects, we should have a targeted effort to to remember that everyone is people and it's hard to know all of where someone is going or who someone is. And the more that we can embrace the whole person and kind of seek those things that's happening outside that is largely particularly influential to the inside, right, where where our expertise is, I think, I think it will yield giant dividends. So, so that's kind of where my mind was at. Um, like I said, I think portrait of graduate pursuit is kind of is captured. I think we could do some work with educator, with the with the staff of, you know, how do we support them as a person? Because when they're supported as a person, they're gonna come here and be be as great of a staff. Because when they're supported as a person, they're going to come here and be be as great of a staff member as we can, as we can help them be and guide them to. So.
And I think this work gives us the opportunity to reflect on how we can do all of that better. I think that when you think about professional development for our staff, there's always opportunities to look at self-reflection on personal growth for our staff. We have budgeted a a good amount of time for professional development throughout the school year. We always try to give options and flexibilities for our staff member throughout those professional development days. And that's something we could work on together to make sure is embedded within this professional development days.
Okay. And I just want to say, even outside of professional development, I'm thinking support structures.
Yes.
You know, like for sure, but absolutely.
And and you think about professional development goes beyond just the sit and get, right? Not the one time, you know, sitting there and listening to presenter, but there's, we want to really provide opportunities, coaching, opportunities where we can go in and watch each other and support and have collaborative conversations. So those kinds of things, definitely. I think you're right. Yeah, thank you.
I just want to make an emphasis on priority number four on communications. It's in much, much broader than communications. I wish that we have got a great audience here tonight. Thank you for being here, and I'm sure we've got many viewers at home. Um, but we had this really healthy conversation about the school district as this cornerstone in a community. And we have to do more as the board and the administration and the faculty and students, parents, connecting all of that together, especially, you know, so that we can find those opportunities to collaborate, do things together, really recognize the community. So I just really wanted to, it's 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 really communications, but but it's really communications and sort of connectivity. And I think we really look to members of the public, you know, talk to us about how we can do that. This is a resource that we need to kind of proliferate, especially as we think about sort of investments and budgets down the road. So that I think I don't want to lose sight about that that connection point.
I just had a question about the timelines for both priority one and two. If the Portrait of a Graduate is required in the twenty seven, twenty eight school year? Um, and and again, I'm asking because I just want to learn myself. Um, some of these are spring twenty seven or June twenty seven. Is that too late? For example, Governance Monitor Student Center opportunity seems to be related to Portrait of a Graduate. Is having that through June twenty seven too late as a timeline, or is that is that something that should be earlier? Or are we thinking that'll work and then we'll go right into that in twenty seven, twenty eight?
That's a good point, because I see that as where, when we want to be finished with the work. The work starts now. And right now, New York State has a four-phase project, uh, for it's a four-phase timeline.
I got you.
So we're in phase one right now, and phase one is supposed to be implementation. But they have, we're, they have slow played it for many reasons, I'm sure, but the rubrics haven't even come out yet. We've, we've seen the Portrait of a Graduate. That is as much as we can implement as of today. And one of the things we'll do, we need to do is align New York State's Portrait of a Graduate with our Portrait of a Graduate, because there are two additional competencies, plus there's culture responsive teaching that we really have to tie in. So that work, and because it's phased, Rob, that's, that's a great point, and that's why.
I read it differently. I saw what you mean by timeline.
Yeah.
Yeah. But actually, that's a great point. And, um, I, before we adopt this next meeting, if you look further on, there are, some of the timelines do say by December twenty six, and I think it's worth being really clear about that. If Lisa, if that's how you interpret that, I think we should just add the by ahead of that, so we're clear on sort of start and end times.
So so an ignorant question that I apologize for the Portrait of a Student in twenty seven, twenty eight. Dan teaches a class for social studies. He has a Regents class. Will a student in that class be able to decide not to take the Regents? Or will there be more classes that the teachers need to um, have? Because you're going to have one Regents class and one non-Regents class, or is it going to be? Or do we not know this yet?
We do not know this yet. I went to a workshop about six weeks ago, and we do not know yet, and everyone central office, central administrators will all feel the same way. There's a lot of unknowns. So phase one is really a building awareness. I see it as a more of a building awareness. And as they create more guidance for us, that's when we can start doing the real work that needs to get done, which is exactly what you're saying. How do we, how do we now say to a, there's a pathway where it doesn't have to be Regents? And and what does, you know, a social studies teacher, what is their role now? And what do the courses look like for these pathways? There's a lot of work that has to be done, and that's why we really need to be starting now, those conversations.
And what is very likely to happen? They will pick a cohort year. A large, I had an opportunity also to attend some of the state sessions. They will pick a cohort year where fall implementation comes in. So you're going to have a transitional phase where some students are still required to take the Regents, while some entering ninth grade will not be.
I understand.
It will be phased.
Thank you.
Can you say just a couple, what's the move away from Regents?
Could you say that one more time?
What's the, what's kind of inspiring this move away from?
So so if you look at a lot of the body of research that's been out there for some time now, is there's been concerns about students being able to demonstrate mastery besides just through the use of one standardized measure. I think New York is only one of two states in the Union that has this left. I think it's New York and California are the only ones. There is merit to testing. It gives us a temperature on how our curriculum is performing, how our students are performing. So I don't want to completely dismiss that testing has no validity. But if there is a student who is particularly strong and being able to give an oral examination rather than a paper and pencil test, or a student has a greater ability to take an AP exam versus a Regents exam. What this does is it gives greater flexibility for a student to still have the same acuity in a body of knowledge, but demonstrate the mastery in different modalities.
I I I think too, uh, like the traditional, um, testing Regents, um, process kind of focuses on a very, uh, I don't want to say very, um, but but it's 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 a particular skill set, right? And and the idea is, is that, um, is that skill set going to serve everyone with where they are going in life? Right? So 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 if you, you know, if you have like four years science, four years math, right? Like, so but it's like, it's like, but but I believe that's, that's the idea is that truth is, life is fluid. You know, and people are going to to a variety of destinations, right? And how do you create a well-rounded student that's equipped irregardless of where they're going to end up at, right? So so when you think of like, for example, empathy, right? As one of the Portrait of a Graduate skills, that's something where like you can know science very well and math very well and be completely inept when it comes to, right, emotional or social empathy. Um, so so it was kind of like, how do you broaden, right, um, the skill sets that's going to lead to successes, is my understanding.
I just want to, um, I think, second, what Mr. Temple was saying earlier about supporting, um, faculty and staff and supporting the whole faculty member, the whole staff member. Uh, I think it mirrors what we talk about with the student experience. It mirrors the mission in our um, district-wide blueprint about supporting, um, students both academically and personally. Uh, and I think it also connects to, you know, communication, you know, hearing, for instance, Mr. Wagner talking about the uh, getting direct feedback from faculty on how the cell phone restrictions are are working in the classroom is as helpful as we make policy decisions or how to how to help faculty and staff. Uh, we have an ex-FCIO student member on the board, right? So we get that direct line of communication. She's working very hard, um, creating surveys, getting us that that information. So that helps us with priority one, the student experience. And I think we will want that same, some sort of mechanism for that kind of feedback from, uh, faculty and staff.
One more, more about logistic question. We read this again. We have questions, comments, we email the board, because we're finalizing it next meeting. Right, okay. Thank you.
And I just wanted to highlight in here, when it says the staff experience, one of the things we added in was staffing. And and just so you, I hear everything you're saying. I come from an MTSS world. So I I believe in the the whole child, the whole person, the whole, and multiple measures. And I do think you're absolutely right. It does start with, it starts with the teacher. It starts with the families. It starts with the community. And we we can grow our children by having everyone, right? It takes a village, and so we have to support everyone.
It's it's modeling that behavior. The students will pick up on it if they see that we treat one another that way in our community.
Yeah.
As I was reading through it, um, and I was glad to hear what you said about the administrators creating their goals from this. I wasn't sure whether they were doing it simultaneous. An enormous amount of work on the administration and the staff to reach these goals and for us to monitor that. Um, and I'm assuming they'll be aligned to the same working together and and blend together, right? So, um, so my takeaway was I wanted to see that next to what we were doing. So I knew how we were going to monitor, what was it going to look like? How can we facilitate and support them in that work as they're working through that? So, um, that was my takeaway when I read it. There's a couple areas where kind of for me, the order of operations and the way it presented on the page, what should happen first? What should happen second? Um, I felt like the flow chart of that in my mind didn't didn't jive, but it's all there. It's just what needed to happen first, second, third before. So I was looking for some.
Reexamine again. Okay. Great. We will go back and make some amendments to that. We'll, uh, take all the feedback to make sure that the document that we bring in next week reflects those changes in some of that work. And hopefully be prepared to move forward in the next meeting.
All right. Update on school start times.
So I shared with all of you a report that had been done probably about eight years ago, six to eight years ago now. Mr. Simons and I were working to try to find the exact date, but it it's been a number of years. When we began to.
Did you say Mr. Simons is still working?
Few, few more weeks till Mr. Lip starts.
All right, just check it.
This was a a big part of the focal point of school start times were the challenges of transportation. And I I don't want to read the whole report. I just want to highlight pieces of it. First of all, just be cautious. This is old data. You know, this is a number of years old now, but there's some very important pieces to think about. We currently run a three-tier bus system. And in running a three-tier bus system, that is predicated really on the size of the district. When you think about the distance that exists between Nassau and Belltop, north to south, to be able to change at any times, everything has a chain reaction. And if you go through here, the explanation of that three-tier bus system, the complexity of it really becomes more and more clear. The other piece that we have to lay on top of that is we have a whole host of private and parochial school runs, special education runs, and additional in-district busing that we do on a regular basis embedded within those runs. We also have special programs that we run. We have relationships to students that are identified as homeless that and we have to, uh, transport for a certain number of miles, even before we get to the end of the day where you start to talk about athletics. Here's the summary that I can give you. Time changes are possible. It is certainly not unthinkable to think that we could either do some small modifications in the secondary time to look at the high school. But just know that it is not as easy as just saying, we're going to move the start time of the high school twenty minutes. Because if we do that, it's going to all these interconnected pieces. It's going to affect everything for that matter. It affects the elementaries. It affects the sports realm. It affects the the things that we do midday. And one of the challenges that we have to think about that we have now that we didn't have eight years ago, right now, we're short ten drivers. So the assistant director, the mechanics, the head bus drivers, they're all out driving on a regular basis. And if we tinker with this where we would need any more drivers, it makes it even more complex. So again, I I didn't mean to bring this to you today to say, let's do a whole new presentation. I wanted you to know that the research is here. There's research that we can go back to. If we restarted this again, I would say we would have to go back and do this all over again. But I wanted you to know that the research was there. They looked at this. The answer is yes, they could make some tweaks, but it it's going, it would take time and it would take a lot of planning, probably with a specialist in transportation, to identify how do we, how do we make this work? It's doable, but it's a lot of work to get there. Happy to answer any questions on this. I don't want to claim to be an expert. I've studied this quite extensively. And I just wanted to give you my summary thoughts on what I had seen.
One of the things we had also talked about at the board goals is really like living our strategic plan. And so I think maybe, you know, we kind of punt this to the long-range planning, you know, effort, and then see if at some point it makes sense to do this. But I think, you know, really just being deliberate about using this great document as a guidepost for what we can take on.
I think that's a very good idea. As I can tell you, a consultant can be upwards of, depending on how long you use, some twenty-five, thirty thousand dollars to bring a consultant.
I'm surprised that's cheap.
I have a quick question, and not about the plan as a whole, but, um, the late buses. I would love to see Monday and Friday late buses. I would hate to see events that are particular students not going because of a lack of transportation. And I love the concept of late buses, have helping our students be independent, right? And and truth is, we know all of our schools are not, you know, bus accessible. So, um, you know, I I just, I just wonder if if we're losing gout on students being active. And I even wonder like, like, how much are late buses use being encouraged? And how in front of students as a concept it is? But I just love opening up access for that, just just as a comment.
And one, one of the challenges when we get to, uh, budget time that I think is a very healthy conversation is ridership. Um, COVID presented a whole unique challenge for transportation and for logistics at the school buildings that COVID pulled an exponentially high number of students away from the school buses. And I don't know that we've seen those those numbers return. But we also have a very defined population that doesn't have that luxury, single-parent households, where two parents are working that just don't have the ability to transport their children like that. So I think looking at ridership is a very good idea, because the cost of even running one bus, it it has that defined cost. But that cost benefit analysis that you're talking about is a very important conversation to have.
Yeah. But I think that we could create a cost benefit if we put it in front of students. We got these buses. Let's get active.
Moving on to regular business. Um, first up, resolution to appropriate and fund the bus purchase capital bus purchase capital reserve fund. Wow. Any questions or comments about this one? Motion to approve? Uh, Rob, motion second? Kathy, all those in favor? Next up, resolution to appropriate from the employees' benefits and accrued liabilities reserve fund. Any questions or comments on that one? Motion to approve? Rob, RP, uh, second? Kathy, all those in favor? Resolution to appropriate from retirement contribution reserve fund. Any questions or comments on that one? Uh, motion? Cindy, second, RP, all those in favor? Resolution to appropriate from the twenty twenty-two capital reserve fund. Questions or comments? Motion? RP, second? Kathy, all those in favor? Resolution to approve additional funding for the retirement contribution sub-reserve fund. Any questions, comments? Motion? Rob, second? RP, all those in favor? Been a long, resolution to approve additional funding for the retirement contribution reserve fund. Any questions or comments? Motion? RP, second? Uh, Rob, and all those in favor?
Just a quick question. These were not able to be consent agenda items, were they? I didn't think so.
I assumed. Resolution to appropriate from the twenty twenty-four tax sursuriary reserve fund. Motion? Sam, second? Uh, Rob, all those in favor? Okay. Resolution to decrease the twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four tax. Resolution to decrease the 2023 and 2024 tax tertiary reserve funds. Motion? Rob, RP, second. Rob, all those in favor? Almost done. Resolution to establish and fund a 2025 tax tertiary reserve fund. Motion? Cindy, second. Uh, Robert, all those in favor? All right. Resolution to abolish the position of administrator for transportation services. Any questions or comments on that one? Okay, motion to approve. Uh, Robert, second. Rob, all those in favor? Okay, and finally, resolution to approve memorandum of agreement placing the supervisor of transportation in the East Green Bush Operations and Technical Supervisor Association. Any comments or questions? No? Motion? Kathy, second. Rob, all those in favor? And moving along to committee reports.
Congratulations, by the way.
So I'll just make this brief. We had our second CCS meeting and the minutes are on the agenda. I just wanted to point out that one of the things we did is we merged CCS with our education committee. And in that committee, typically we do those mandated, New York State mandated regulations or legislation and any policy changes. So Portrait of a Graduate is going to be a conversation. I've already let them know at CCS. So we'll be having conversations about that. The other thing I wanted to point out is during our five-year program reviews, one of the things we added in there is to ensure that departments are bringing in the portrait of a graduate in the work that we're doing. So everything is starting to align. The stars are aligning. We had our presentations over summer curriculum projects and they really were amazing. I'm very impressed by the summaries that everyone gave. And we had a technology and a professional development report. So it was an excellent meeting and our next one is in November, November 5th. Thank you.
Quick comment.
Yes.
Program reviews. I would love the idea that when the program reviews get presented, like what I always think of is like, how do we all talk the same language? Right? So I love to hear a presentation where the program requests have a simple, like, 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 so, so like, when we go to our admin team and say, hey, how do we help this program obtain the resources they need? I love the idea of there being a continuity across from the program review, not trying to shape the program review for our staff, but just wondering how do we speak the same language that is closer to being put right into our budget as a consideration for should we go this way or that way? And I'm not sure if, but that, that's, yeah.
Yeah, no, that's a good question. Actually, part of the program review, there are very explicit steps that a department has to take. So starting with what have we accomplished? What have we, what are things that we've celebrated? And then it goes right into, okay, now what do we do well? What do we not do well? Conduct a needs assessment, create our recommendations, which then bring us to our overarching goals. Sometimes we have departments that do it by level. Sometimes they do it as a district. And that's really the driving force of every program review every five years. Those explicit steps are in each one. So when you see a presentation, you'll start to see that, that is a repeat. You'll see accomplishments, strengths, weaknesses, recommendations, goals. And out of the recommendations and goals, that's where you're going to see that tie-in with the, your, the strategic plan.
Thank you. So, so, so what I'm, what I'm hearing is, is that in, in my mind, we're so, so like, but what I'm hearing is, is that in some ways, right? The program review is going to encompass for that department exactly how they see it. So if we see any incontinuity, it's just going to be from the lens of how we view things as a district and what our needs is for growth versus what program, like, like it would just be the level of view. Cause, cause what I'm trying to say is, is that like literally when I see the program review, it's like, it's like, well, how do we support today? And, and it's just like, sometimes like, like when you make a request and, and if, you know, it'd be interesting to see in this new year, the, the process. But, but the question is always like, that, that's, that's always what I'm wondering, just how do we support as much as possible? And I just love to see a review where it's like, we are so close to being able to execute on the request or at least level set the communication where why we can't, what we can't, you know, like that, that's kind of like, yeah.
Future-driven versus immediate, like what's happening right now. And a lot of, one of the nice things also is with CCS, each step of the process, they have to bring it to CCS. They have to present it and they ask for endorsement from CCS. And then it comes, then it, there's hope, there's layers. Dr. Coats is involved. I'm always involved. I will be helping to steer the ship.
Yes.
Uh, and helping to encourage them. We all have to work together here. This is not going to happen just in my silo. And one of the things I'm really pleased about is we do have, I have a really great relationship with a lot of the staff. So I feel like I have the ability to get them on board and with these great processes in place, I think we can, we can make that happen. But I will, I will keep that in mind.
Thank you.
And Jesse, both Cindy and I are on the CCS committee. And I'll tell you, you know, all last year, we heard from the departments doing their program reviews that will be presented to us at the next few meetings. So it's been going on for more than a calendar year before it actually makes it to a board meeting. So we get a lot, you get even more like nitty-gritty detail in the CCS meetings than we'll see here. But there's, there's so much work that goes into these program reviews. It's amazing to me that I want to say it's probably more than a calendar year by the time it gets to the board.
You sometimes will see them in the fall, but from the previous year. So there's a program review right now that's just about ready to come. PE, physical education and our health program that was completed all last year. Just have to fine tune it a little bit, but we're, we're getting there and hopefully it will be presented. If not, I'm not sure it'd be ready at the end of the month, but by November, hopefully.
I noticed there is a discussion with the tech committee about AI policy and that eventually the Board of Education will be called upon to be writing policy on, on this. So I think the board will have to do their, their homework, but everyone doing their homework too. There are many advantages to AI, but I think we need to also approach it with critical caution to make sure that our use of AI in the district is driven by the, the curriculum, that we're not outsourcing critical thinking, that we are making sure students are gaining media literacy, information literacy. When, when something comes to you on a chatbot, for instance, it feels like authority, right? It's typed something in and this, there's all of this language. Yeah, yeah, right. But is, is that correct? How do you verify the sources, those sorts of things? You know, obviously the people who are creating and selling AI products will tell us we can't live without it and they make our lives better. But so do the people who make the cell phones and we've just heard that teachers think otherwise in the classroom, right? So I'm not being a Luddite though. I have a thick skin. If you want to call me a Luddite, I don't care. But yeah, just so that we're looking at all sides of this, of this issue so that we don't run into the kind of problem down the road. We don't want any one-hit wonders, right? With, as we're enacting policies and programs around AI. And I'll try to do my due diligence and find data-driven research on the pros and cons of these technologies in the classroom. And hope all, everyone working on that committee could do so.
Yeah. And Robert, we, we had a meeting on the seventh and, and Mr. Goodwin went through and explained it because it was all over my head. And it, it's, because I was thinking like, you know, just talking about safety and all this other stuff. It's really at this point, and we probably could have a presentation at some point. It's really not a kid going on chat GPT or even something else. It's really teacher-driven, creating sort of this, what's it called? A gem or a ba or something like? I paid attention. You're creating your own gem and the kids are following through. So it's an internal, it's also an internal AI concept more than an outside. It's interesting. It's really quite interesting, but yeah.
And I think you're right. We have intentionally, I know Peter, Peter Goodwin, the Director of Technology, has been slow-playing this, even though AI is fast-playing it. It's really important to, I proceed with caution. I think it's important that before we just put policy into place, that we really explore, we understand and we learn. And how do we as teachers make sure we're driving it? Because you're right, it can get out of control pretty quickly if we don't. So thank you for your support with that.
Your example of cell phones is perfect analogy. Everyone thought that cell phones were going to be such great influence in the classroom. And in some ways they were, but the negative certainly far out is the con of the pros, really.
I, I, I do want to add too, like I do feel like we have to take advantage of our best resource, the youth, right? So when we think about technology, cell phones, right? Think about like Mark Zuckerberg, right? Or all these youthful figures, right? Like that, that really took technology and transformed it into something else. And I just think really like the, the youthful period is such a time where you really have the ability to dig in. Like when we think about our staff, right? Like sometimes as adults, it's hard for us sometimes to navigate these systems and these complex structures, right? And the world's getting more complex as time goes on. You know, we're keeping up with curriculum. We're keeping up with our personal lives. We're trying to pay the bills, right? We're building, you know, so, so it's like, but, but, but the students that we are teaching really have time and interest to really explore. And I just think that it really is a unique opportunity to help them help us build the ship. And I, and so when I think of like vibe coding and think, I think sometimes the pros and cons, we could talk about that till we're, you know, but actually getting out there and experiencing the pros and cons. And then I think that's what Peter's been doing, but that, that's how you actually know truly what those pros and cons is and kind of build that framework. And I just think we have a limitless where we could build skills and also add to our structure as an institution at the same time.
No pressure, youth.
I actually had a question. Um, I wanted to ask if there's anything in our, in the, any of the five blueprint priorities regarding AI and how we're going to work on it.
It is in there. Integration of technology without explicitly, because technology, it can mean many things, not just computers. It can mean more, many, many things.
And if you go into the strategic plan, it's actually an action item in the strategic plan. Yep.
One of the things that I emphasize when I'm in the classroom and just talking to teachers. And if a teacher will say, why try not to get them on the technology? I, I try to remind everyone that when we bring in technology, we have the, we have the power, the opportunity to show them how to utilize technology in a way that's an opportunity for learning, an opportunity for presenting. How do we use it educationally? We, it's, we don't want them to be on it during lunchtime or at recess. It's about how do we, we show them, it's the same thing with a cell phone, right? We have conversations now. They're not going to know how to use it once they walk away from us. That's what I try to encourage people that we integrate technology. We have that control and it's, it's really powerful to have that. So.
Moving along, uh, no table motion is correct. Old business.
Kim, I do have something. I don't know if this is appropriate. Lisa, your comment about the PE review being, last year we were looking at a review of athletics. And is that part of that?
No.
Okay.
Nope. The athletics program review is in two years.
We were doing something. Okay.
Yeah, I think that's separate.
Separate. Okay.
Then I'm not sure where that is.
Yeah, maybe we could just figure out where that is and.
We can talk about that. Okay. So incentive agenda? Anyone?
I'm making a motion.
Anyone have comments or questions? Okay, can I have a motion? RP, uh, second. Rob, all those in favor? Okay. Any new business? Public forum?
Yes, sir.
Sorry. Hello, Mark Halsey, work at the Bus Garage. I live at 16 Ludlow Lane in Rensselaer, which is actually DeFriesville, but that's okay. So many things to say, but I'll keep it brief. One, Holly, you look great. Congratulations for being a senior and I hope you sing in Once Upon a Stage.
Thank you.
I'm glad they brought that. I'm glad they brought that back. Music and art is something that was big in my family for my kids going through, and I hope it continues to be. So I'm glad that you guys did that. Just a thanks to the board, to Dr. Coats especially for hiring this fellow to my right, Mr. Lips, who I've known briefly throughout the course of my career. And I don't want to say that I pushed for, for, for his approval. I really had nothing to do with it. But I'm just, I really think that he is the key to opening up the next era of the transportation department. You know, I, I, I gave him a tour of the facility. It's something we're going to have to talk about in the future because it is a dump. And I, and I mean that with all great respect, but we, we make it work. But I think you will be excited for what is to come. The report that you have looked at, that was done for the bell time study in 2018 by myself. So if you, if there is a question on that, it is still fairly relevant and those things can be looked at. The late run is certainly something that can be looked at. It is a struggle. So you know, our, our district is 77 square miles total. So running six late buses is really a challenge to get kids home, even within two miles of their home. So it is not an easy thing. Never spoken to one of this, these before, but I just wanted to say thanks. I'm, I'm, I'm proud to work here. I'm proud to, to work alongside Mr. Lips, starting on November 10th. Thank you for providing Mr. Simons for the last couple of months. I know it's been eye-opening for him and hopefully he will share some of that with you as well. So Holly, again, it's so nice to see you. Tell Shay I said hello. And the only person I think that's ever given a shout out to his bus driver in his valedictorian speech, so, or salutatorian speech. So about when he threw up the first day of school, I remember well. I know. I just like to see you blush. But thank you all. So I hope you have a great night and that's it. Thank you.
Anyone else? Board forum?
So it's hard, it's hard to follow Mr. Halsey, but I just want to say welcome, Mr. Lips. What you said about how important the busing is, I think what we, I want to add to that is that the bus driver is the first school employee our students see every day and the last one that they see every day. They're the bookends to our student's school day and that bus ride bookends our student's school day. So if that's a good experience, that really sets them up for success and helps them have a good day. So I don't want us to ever forget how important transportation is and how important the employees there are. So thank you for joining us and I'm really looking forward to it.
I'm going to echo Kathy's comments, uh, like, certainly I won't say which one of my children, but I always hear about the bus experience, the importance of it. Um, but, but we have a great district. We have great bus drivers, um, transportation system. But no, I just also want to thank everyone for even having an opportunity to be here. Sometimes I come in here, it's a tough day, just hearing about education, the work our students and staff is doing, really kind of brightening things up. And, um, you know, you leave here more energized than, than you came here with. So, uh, you know, just thank you for coming and glad to be joining this work.
Again, welcome. Glad you're here. Um, thank you for everyone's hard work to make that happen. I know that was a challenge. Negotiating the systems behind that. I wasn't able to be at the last meeting and I had the luxury of being able to watch it. And I appreciate Mrs. Mulligan's presentation and the data that was provided. So not being here, I was able to look at it and understand it. And tonight was an important night, but it was, we could go through that because of the hard work that you did. So I appreciated having that information and I was able to stop the tape and process it and think about it. Nothing else had that, you know, ability, but the information was really helpful. Thank you.
Welcome again. So glad to have you on board. Appreciate it. Also wanted to give out congratulations on the award of tenure with, this was in the, the consent agenda to Ms. Callahan, Ms. Latwal, Mr. Lombardi and Mr. Myers-Collins, tremendous accomplishment, lots of, lots of hard work. And it feels good to be recognized by your, your peers in your district. And lastly, a thank you to P Y X and iHeartRadio for their donation to the backpack program, another item that we just approved in the agenda. Congrats and thanks.
I'll just note, I am the board liaison to the transportation team. It's a role that I volunteered for. I'm new this year, so I'd love to maybe come over and spend some time, get kind of familiar. Maybe we can go together, Dr. Coats. And so welcome. Look forward to working with you.
And welcome. Everybody already said it, so. All right. Executive session. All right. So motion to adjourn. Kathy, second. Robert, all those in favor?